Now we'll go into the regular council meeting.
Is this in the house quick?
Of January the 12th, 2016. And we have a moment of silence, reflection or prayer, and Maria Walther is going to do that.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected, our plan, or appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting November 24th and the council work session of December the 8th, 2015. Any changes, corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the November 24th minutes and the December 8th minutes be approved as.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, we didn't do a roll call. All right. Call the roll so we know all of us are here.
Roll call? Here, but can I formally change it to Hermes now?
Yes.
Okay. Kavod?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here. Okay. And the minutes stand as approved. Okay, we have a guest speaker. Is our guest speaker here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, Ms. Ann Wilkinson, Field Rep for Congressman Brad Winster.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having me tonight. I apologize for my gym shoes. I've got an knee injury and cortisone this morning, so banned to gym shoes for a couple of weeks. But thanks for having me. I just like to come around at least once a year, reintroduce myself for those of you who might not know me, and there's a refresher for those who do, just to let you guys as well as the constituents know of the services that our district office provides. We are basically in our district office liaisons to the federal agencies. So if anyone has issues with IRS, which was a huge one last year, passports, visas, social security, Medicare, veterans are a very big issue in our district, lots of VA claims, and we help get medical, excuse me, records, service records and medals if they've lost them or never received them. We are also having a job fair for veterans on Friday, February 19th. We're going to be hosting that in Anderson Township at the Anderson Center. Once we have, I think we've got the flyer finalized, so I'll be sending out the invitation probably tomorrow, so you'll get the details on that. A couple of other things that we have coming up, we'll be reaching out to high schools regarding our service academy nominations that we do every year for West Point, the Naval Academy, Air Force, and the Merchant Marine Academy. And then we're also going to be hosting the Congressional Art Competition for high school students this year, which is a neat opportunity for students to submit their artwork, and the winner gets to take a trip to DC and they get their artwork displayed in the Capitol. So it's kind of a neat honor for them. Also, as far as legislative concerns, we handle more of the agency's side of things in the district, but if you have any legislative concerns, we can take those as well and pass them along to our DC staff and to Dr. Winster as well. And I have some of these flip cards. I'll leave on the back pew with my business cards in case anybody needs to get in touch with us. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. Okay, this is the time now for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcrition. Comments are limited to three minutes, and you'll notice that we've changed from two minutes to three minutes.
My name is Thad Willard. I live in Damon Road, Green Hills. First, I want to congratulate the new members, at least two, one of the brand-new members of council, and he'll get broken in fairly quickly, and I understand he has some experience with the village in the past, and therefore he probably knows where the skeletons were buried. So hopefully that'll help everybody. I also want to thank Representative Devers for coming in and swearing in my wife for council tonight. And now to something that near and dear to my heart. This is a new year, and I think we all should make a resolution to dispose of, somehow eliminate, the junk residential property we acquired in 2008. There's some of it still in our inventory, and quite frankly, we've got to get rid of it because it's costing us too much, and it's cost us millions over the years, and we're already paying for it by increased garbage service, et cetera. And it's not a question of blame at this point, it's a question of correcting and getting rid out of a very nasty situation. And I just want everyone to kind of think of that because it's serious. We are, we are economically because of it. And again, everyone did it with the best of intentions, but it turns sour, and we've got to get out of it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure.
Representative Jonathan Dever, I live in the deer with my wife. I just wanted to come by and say congratulations to the returning members and congratulations to our new member. It's been a privilege to serve you in the last year in the General Assembly, and just want to give you a quick 30-second, 60-second update. For those that have been paying attention, we did find a way to put $2 million more into the school system here, which has been a long, long, hard fight to get more funds here for our kids in this area. When I ran, I came and I told you that I was going to fight for public education, and I was going to provide some more revenue and make sure that we had a funding formula that our school system could plan for five years, and I'm proud to say that we won that fight last year. And so our school actually has a long-term capability of planning for the future, and they have the funds and the resources they need to teach the kids here. Now, that's not to say that there's not more work to do and that we've got some more things that we've got to work through, but at the State House, I can tell you that the leadership's dedicated to making education a priority, not only for the 20th House District, but also for the rest of the state. I'm always open and available for questions, concerns. We will be providing you some tools here shortly, Mr. Mayor. I remember I was talking to you about the Dollar Deed Program that we initiated, and I'd like to let you know that it passed the House unanimously with bipartisan support. It's on its way to the Senate. We should have that by law before we break for summer. For those of you that are not familiar with that, what the Dollar Deed Program would allow you to do is to keep folks in their homes so that the lenders don't have to go ahead and foreclose. They can keep the tenants, or the homeowners in their home, allow them to become a tenant under that law, and it'll flow that cash to the local revenue fund, so you're not going to lose your local revenue, you're not going to lose your tax base, provide some stability to the community and to the school system, and also, more importantly, for those kids so that they've got some stability. So that act should become law here in about six months, so when it does, I will let you know. But it's, we're going to be educating the lenders and the community leaders so that those folks that are struggling to make ends meet have an option to stay in their own home and not be evicted and transplanted, which I know is something that's affected this community as well. So I'm always open to questions. If you have any ideas, thoughts, you know, issues on local government funding, please let us know. We're starting, we're still trying to work through that. That has been the ultimate challenge, I know, for you in this community. It's a challenge across the state. We're working through that, and we should have some legislation introduced before the end of the year that will deal with trying to study it and get our hands on it. Green Hills is a unique place. There's not very many like it in the country. There's no other place like it in the state, and it's going to need a special touch. So I'd appreciate your input and your insight as we try to navigate that. Thank you all, and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Reports of village officials. In this will manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start with the public records reports for the last half of 2015. First one was, and I think he's going up, so I hope you all can hear me. July 28th, I received a request from Diana Kohler for an electronic copy of the management letter and audit report for the Village of Green Hills audit conducted this year and all records from Finance Committee Executive Session of July 28th, 2015. On August 14th, we had a walk-in request, a copy of our financial statement. On August 27th, Diana Kohler requested all documents, records concerning the green belt violation on Joywood since March 20, March 2015. On August 31st, I received an anonymous request also for public records for all documents and records concerning the green belt violation on Joywood since March 2015. We had a walk-in, actually from Pat Bender, for a copy of the charter. That was in October of 2015. In November, November 10th, I received another anonymous request for documents and records concerning the green belt violation on Joywood since August of 2015. And on December 18th, I received a request from Diana Kohler for electronic copy of the National Historic Landmark Application as submitted by the village. So that was for the last half of last year. I do have one item that I put in front of you, and this is every January, I provide you with a memo of who would be in charge. This is per the charter. So I have given that to you tonight. We probably should have had a motion on the agenda, so maybe at the appropriate time if somebody wanted to make an emotion to approve that, and it will be on file with our clerk. I've not made any changes, and it's the same as it has been, seems to be working for us. Okay, I would like to spend a little time talking about a bigger project that we have going on right now, and that's our rainwater project. We've gotten some really great input from people who are interested in that and want to learn a little bit more about it, and I know there are also some concerns that have been raised. So for kind of both sides there, I wanted to fill everybody in on where we are with that. First of all, this is a project, if you remember, we are working in partnership with the Mill Creek Watershed Castle. They have a lot of experience in this, and they helped us get a grant from the Ohio EPA to fund this particular project. They used their engineers to design this particular project. So the main purpose is to capture water runoff that comes really across Wynton Road, through the shopping center, under Enfield, and back into the golf course area, and ultimately down to the, makes its way down to the lake. So with this project, we're trying to accomplish a couple of things. First, capturing the water that has been spilling over the market stand itself. It's, there are now gutters that are going to channel it directly to some rain barrels that will capture some of it. As they overflow, they will feed out on, towards the garden that's on the lower end of the market stand. There was a concern raised that that's, you know, the ice that might result from that, but our feeling is now we're capturing. Previously, that was the case for everything under the market stand. So we're at least now capturing it and focusing it in one particular direction. So the rain barrels will, I think I already said, they will retain some of it, then as they overflow, that's when there would be some additional drainage. They do have spigots on them, and they'll be able to be utilized with a hose for watering the gardens. Our service department will be able to hook up to them. So that's pretty good. I also wanted to let everybody know that the tops of those barrels can actually be planted in the spring and summer, and they'll have plantings in them, so that should improve the aesthetics for those. Okay, so then the water heads across Enfield into a rainwater garden that's, you've probably, maybe you've probably seen already, and that will capture a lot of the water. The purpose there is for it to sink slowly into the ground. It's been, there's a lot of different specialized layers underneath that area that will filter the water as it makes its way down. And when it's full and overflows, that's when it'll be captured and actually go through the piping down to a large cistern that's been installed down at the lower end of the pool. It's a 5,000 gallon, and again, that's, that's another one that can be tapped by our service department or the golf course to use for watering or whatever, you know, our water needs are. Overflow from that goes through the piping into the golf course and to the natural drainage that's, that's currently runs through the golf course. So, you know, our hope is that that will reduce the amount of water that goes down to the golf course, and any water that does go there, it should be cleaner because of that. So we're pretty excited about that. Another real advantage of this project, we felt, is that, you know, it's also intended to be a demonstration of what, what a resident could do, you know, with rain barrels or harvesting. So there is a strong educational component. Again, we're not done with this project. That will probably come in the spring. We also have some signage coming that will explain everything that people are seeing and that's going on with it. And so it's, it's ongoing. I thought it was worthwhile to go through that. You know, I would encourage everybody to just be patient. Let's try to finish this project, and, you know, we've already had a meeting with the contractor and have talked about, you know, some ways we might tweaks in certain things, but.
If anybody wants to see what it looks like, and I know it's a different, it's taken a step farther, but down by the ranger station off to the right of Wynton, they did a similar setup. And once the plants get going, I mean, it really serves a purpose and is nice looking too, so I think it's a good addition to our area back there.
And in fact, that reminds me of, there are still some additional plantings to be done. The pineal, there's bushes in there right now, but there's additional planting, and we hope in the spring to have a volunteer group put together to help us with those final, final plantings for that project.
What's the scheduled completion date for the project?
Well, most of the construction should be done by spring, but then there's a maintenance period, which is all part of the project. That basically goes through most of this year, 2016.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, what else do I have? Recreation Commission report. I know the Recreation Commission, Doug Kohler and I will be meeting later this week to kind of talk a little bit about the role of the commission, and we have our new member, and I know Doug's looking forward to getting them organized for another year, so I'm sure I'll have more information on that at our next meeting. We have been having some storm sewer issues. Wanted to make you aware and also express a concern to everybody. If you see anybody putting anything in a catch basin, please stop them, or, no, don't try to stop them. Call the police department. And also, call, we're going to be having this on our website. There's a number that you can call with Hamilton County if you see anybody putting anything down in catch basin. And we've cleaned out one in particular that was just absolutely shocking, what we found in that storm sewer, but we don't believe it's happening elsewhere, but you never know. Things here and there could, couldn't get into that storm sewer system, and that ultimately goes, you know, through our drainage system and into the lake and, you know, makes ugly things. So do be watching for some more information on that in both the journals. We'll try to get some articles in and on our website on what people can be doing to help that situation a bit. And that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Comments, questions?
I have a question. When is that meeting that you have with the Recreation Commission?
It's not with the commission, it's just with Doug Kohler on Friday. We, we meet once in a while.
Since I'm now the chair of that, would I be allowed to join you or not, or how do you feel?
I don't mind with me.
Is that okay? Okay, but it's Friday, what time?
It's, we're meeting Friday at 8:30.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if, I'm sorry to interrupt, usually we dismiss the guests.
Oh.
Is there any way to do that?
We can.
We want them all to stay. We got past council members here, past mayor here, past clerk here, citizens, taxpayers, visitors, interested parties. Let them all stay.
And I know some probably really want to get home to watch the, the.
The football game was last night.
Oh, is that right? All right.
We have to warm up the dogs.
All right. Law Director, and it's not Jeff Forbes, it's Kevin.
I'm Kevin McDonough, filling in for Jeff Forbes. Hi, everybody. I met some of you before the meeting started. I don't have any report. Jeff did not ask me to pass anything on, so.
Okay, all right. Clerk of Council, Kathy Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The December 2015 community calendar and ordinance numbers, 2015, 10 SNS, 11 LNR, and resolutions 2015, 42F, 43SNS, 44LNR, 45F, 46F, 47F, 48F, 49F, 50F, 51F, and 52F were posted as required. Additionally, the 2016 work, council work session meeting schedule was prepared, distributed, and posted. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Okay. All right, moving on. Chief of Police, Neil Furman.
Thanks, Mayor. You may recall several months ago, actually in October, there was a bank robbery in Springdale that resulted in a manhunt that ended up here in Green Hills. The suspect was pursued in a vehicle, and one of our officers, Andy Moore, threw out stop sticks and was able to cause the car to stop. The suspect fled on foot, and I've been asked many times whether or not he was apprehended. And yes, he was after committing yet another bank robbery. He was, actually robbed a bank over in Deerfield Township and had a, I believe it was a BMW, and took that to a BMW dealership and hid, parked on the lot. They had a very attentive lot attendant who went to the manager and said, "That's not one of ours." So they called the police, and they found him hiding in the trunk of the vehicle with the money and with a weapon.
Oh, wow.
So he has been charged by the FBI with multiple armed robberies, and he's now incarcerated pending prosecution. Should be in jail for a long, long time. Tony Patton is our newest field training officer. He recently completed an FTO course at Butler Tech Academy. We anticipate filling an officer vacancy in the next few months, and the new candidate will be assigned to Officer Patton and our other FTOs upon selection and appointment. Former Mayor Hoffman, still in the audience, he would be interested to know that, and I've communicated some of this to him, but the family of former Green Hills Police Chief John J. Baldwin, who is now deceased. But the family contacted us regarding his service to the department over 50 years ago. We were able to unearth the plaque that listed him as the police chief in 1959. We sent him some memorabilia of the department and the community. They were very grateful, and they plan to make a trip back to Green Hills to visit and also to visit with former Mayor Hoffman. On December 17th, Marty Huff and the staff of the Village Tribidor provided lunch to the on-duty police officers and firefighters in Green Hills. It was a very generous gesture that we sincerely appreciate. We sent out two crime alerts during the month of December. The first was on December 10th, and that alerted residents to a package that was delivered in the J section that was subsequently removed and stolen from the porch. And the second passed down information about malware that was available for phones and that could actually disable the telephone. We also worked with residents in the B section with some neighborhood problems. I met with Greg Roy, who is the new owner of the Bargains and Buyout Store that is being renovated at 450 Eswin Street, the old Johnny's Toys location. We've obtained emergency contact information and discussed some crime prevention strategies with him, and they plan to have that open within the next few months. During the month of December, we investigated seven traffic accidents, which was up from five same time last year. Thirteen crimes, up from four last December. 150 other incidents, down from 262 the previous December. We made 528 contacts. 261 of those were dispatched or received by telephone as compared to 190 last December, and 266 of those were self-initiated by officers. We provided assistance to the public in 111 instances, assisted other agencies 49 times, made 26 criminal arrests, and 42 traffic arrests. And on a personal note, last week, I observed my 40th anniversary in law enforcement. I started when I was 19 as a police deputy. I am very thankful to Maria, Bud Walderman, former Mayor Merle, and especially Yvonne Kovak, who selected me at the time. I'm now approaching three years here in Green Hills, and I've very much enjoyed my interaction with residents, officers, members of the fire department, particularly the manager and the members of council. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity, and I thank you very much for that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I heard a good source from Hamilton that, that thought that you started your career at 10.
Might have been, it was a long time ago.
And the person sitting there behind Tony's space spot is not the fire chief. Does anybody have any report for the fire department tonight?
I think he should try.
Yeah, you got the seat. All right. Okay. Hearing none. The next report's from me, and we'll pass this down to Mr. Lee for him to look at and his committee. But, and there's probably nothing that can be done. Duke is advising us that they're applying for two rate increase, increases for accelerated service line replacement program for the gas service. One, a $5 million increase going to the PUCO, and another one for $800,000. So we'll see what the PUCO does with it, but we may be paying more to get new gas lines. I have the municipal court distribution for the month of November. $51 went to the county, $1,492 to the state, $6,997 to the Village of Green Hills, for a total of $8,540. The month of December, distribution was $63 to the county, $1,779, whoops, excuse me. That's wrong. I'm reading the wrong number. The county got 63. The state got $1,869. The village got $8,892, for a total of $10,824. And that's all I have. I just welcome the council for a new year and look for exciting things to happen this year. Any questions? If not, we'll go to committee reports. Community development.
First, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping for good, exciting things to happen. First is just, no. But I think you would agree with me. Next, I'm going to get with Melanie. We're going to set up a calendar of when we'll have community development meetings throughout the year, during the council meeting. I'm no longer on recreation, but just an update on the walking paths. The maps have been put together. I think I saw.
It's on the website.
Yep, it's on the website, so if you're really bold and feeling like you're building in Alaska and want to take a walk on the walking paths, you'll need the map probably with the snow. But we did have a couple of the labels peel up. I was given those in my mailbox. I wonder where all this dirt was coming from, but those will be replaced. We've got to wait till the concrete gets warm enough and it's, you know, we don't want to put them down in this, this weather, but not very many of them have come up, but we'll make sure that gets taken care of and, and replaced, and they'll be up and running. And that'll conclude it for community development at this point.
The, the one that was in front of my house, it just appears like magic and disappears like magic. It was right away, so I, it was not me returning it. I don't even know where it went.
I saw it on Thad's car, I thought.
Oh, yeah. But I saw a couple of them around the square also. It was on like on the mulch area there. Okay.
We, I had the, the sign company, we've done a lot of work with them, and he's done a lot of research. He had ordered special material, which is a foil-based material, but when I looked at what's around Children's Hospital, they actually aren't using a foil-backed material. I think some of our sidewalks are rougher than others, so I'm going to look into possibly changing material. If we do it on a hot enough day, you put it down with a torch, it, you know, maybe, it looks like the plastic becomes more of a part of the sidewalk. We'll just do some experimenting. They're not terribly expensive, although I don't think anybody wants to maintain, you know, keep, keep putting those down, but we'll, we'll get it right.
Moving on, traffic and safety. Melanie Hermes.
I will get with both chiefs and Glenn to set up some dates, and then we'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Financing audit, Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not met as a committee yet this year, but I do have some year-end numbers for everyone. Our income tax receipts for 2015 were up 6.3% over prior year to $1,086,543. over prior year to a million eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars. That's generally a good positive indicator for our community that our folks are making more money. Either that or we're getting better at collecting it, but I'd like to thank the former. On a not positive note, our real estate taxes collected that went into the general fund were down one point nine three percent, which is an indication that home values are down. And those receipts were three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars in two thousand and fifteen. As you know, we have a general fund and then we have special funds. And the money that goes into those special funds are only used for very specific purposes and the general fund can be spent in a variety of ways. I'm pleased to report through the fiscal conservativeness of the manager, the finance director and those of us that appropriate money. Our general fund is down about thirty thousand dollars from last year, which was better than our plan. We actually appropriated a million five one nineteen and we spent a million four seventy-two. So we only spent ninety-six percent of what we actually appropriated. The general fund balance at year end had an increase over the prior month or the prior year end of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. We'll have more, a full financial report for December once we wrap everything up. But generally, it was a, it was a good year. From a finance standpoint, it was a very tight budget and we managed through it well and we'll continue to manage through it. We'll have some breathing room here in a few years, but we still have some tough sledding in front of us. So that will be the end of my report and at the proper time, I have two pieces of legislation.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Recreation Cable TV, Maria Walther.
We haven't met yet, I was just assigned. But I would like also someone to be able to put in an email or something the dates, the quarterly meetings that they have for Way Cross. And I would like to be present on those. So if I can have, I know that you represent. Yeah, if you can send me the quarterly meetings of that, I would like to be present and that's what we'll be able to report here. And I will be joining the recreation meeting or whatever, interaction on Friday, if I may. I would like that very much. And I will have, I will supply you with the dates of the meeting. I need to meet then with Mr. Koller and find out when he's available and then I will supply you with the dates and times of those as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Comments, questions? Hearing none, enter governmental affairs and laws and rules. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The laws and rules committee has not met since the latter part of November. And those reports were presented to the December work session. And then there was no meeting scheduled in December. Currently, I tentatively have a meetings, meeting planned for January twenty-fifth at ten AM here in council chambers. The agenda is pending. Other than that, I'd just like to welcome our new member, Jeff Cavode. And congratulations to the other two who were re-elected.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, Service and Streets, Mr. Cavode.
I've got a lot to report tonight, so just sit back and relax. I'm gonna talk for about a half an hour.
Well, I do have some notes from the last time that we picked up. And the most recent thing that I brought up to both Ms. Kovak and our Chief of Police was that I was really speechless on the amount of garbage set out on non-garbage days. I go, as part of my duties, I would go around on Friday, Saturday and Sunday to make sure that everything was compliant. And I know that in eviction times, sheriff's evictions, you know, you have to wait twenty-four hours. But these are not sheriff's evictions. I mean, these are garbage cans that went out on Saturday after Christmas that were not going to be picked up until Wednesday morning. The same thing for other times that I just marked the route and so forth. And my question came, breaking the law is breaking the law, a ticket is a ticket. And just wonder if there will be a way that will be a more active involvement from our police force when they are touring around and seeing that that's happening. We have zoning codes and we have regulations. And again, breaking the law, whether it's speeding over ten miles an hour or taking the garbage out five days prior to that, it makes our village look abandoned, actually, many of the times. And sometimes the garbage has not even been put on the garbage cans properly and lit it, but just around it. So I just would like for perhaps Mr. Mayor, Ms. Kovak and the Chief of Police to maybe come up with something that we could do or think about and that we can enforce that a little bit better because it was disheartening to see. The same thing, you've brought so many times the question or the statement about the garbage cans being out after. I haven't seen that many after the fact anymore. Because yes, I, I'm an overachiever and I go out looking for garbage cans after the garbage is being collected and so forth. And you know, just as a regular rule, I don't find that as a problem as much as it used to be. I don't know what is your intake on that. But this garbage being taken out on Fridays and staying out there until Wednesday morning, it's really not a pretty sight. So I just hope that we can do something about it.
May I comment? I'm glad to hear you're noticing that there aren't so many after the fact because I can tell you it takes an enormous amount of staff time that gets devoted to this issue.
Oh, I know.
And you guys as council have talked in the past on how you want it to deal with that. We do a letter, which usually gets pretty good compliance. We've actually only had to go forward with the citation one time. But it is an ongoing thing, unfortunately. And yes, people do set it out, they do tend to do that over the weekend. By the time we get them a letter, it's pretty close to time for them to have it picked up. I personally would hate to see our police department, we're so small anyway, to have them have to be actively doing a ticket. But you know, if it's council's desire that we skip the letters and go right to tickets, I guess we better talk about that. But otherwise, know that we are generating them. They, many do get there after the fact, but it's simply a matter of timing. But I, you know, sad I don't think we'd ever have one hundred percent compliance, but we just keep whittling away on it as best we can and as time and staff permits.
Well, it's just very noticeable, the after the collection of the garbage, the cans are not left out. But the amount of garbage cans are out and garbage all over the place prior to the Tuesday night.
Right, and I think that was over Christmas, so they probably had all their Christmas wrappings and stuff out there too. Yeah, that was unfortunate, but anyway, so if council wants a change in policy on that, let us know.
Can we put that for the work session perhaps, the discussion of the work session? Would that be a good topic for that?
Sure.
Okay.
Just another quick comment. It's my understanding that we're starting to pick up garbage cans that have been left out. You know, if you keep losing your garbage can, that's also a deterrent. But yeah, I think it'd be a good work session topic.
That'll be great, thank you.
And of course, I've been around here for forty years and forty years ago, that was a major discussion.
Things haven't changed.
It hasn't changed, right. There's always somebody, somebody new moves into town. Maybe they moved from a town that the garbage collection was on Friday. And so their mindset's putting it out that day. I don't know, I can't explain it, but it does it.
Well, I did figure out also that Corrini gets picked up on, the garbage gets set out on Sunday. Not Corrini per se, but.
That's Springfield town.
Springfield Township, yeah, just at the edge of it. And I kept saying like, why are they taking it out on Sunday? And I, you know, just check on that and the markation limit, I said, okay, they can. And that's okay, they can can, and I just, you know, latched up on that.
I might mention one other thing about Jeff. Jeff grew up here and his mother worked forever practically as our assistant pool manager and taught a lot of people how to swim and trained a lot of lifeguards. So the Cavodes, both his brother and his sister worked for the village down at the pool.
Yeah, I've cleaned out some of those storm drains. I know what you're talking about. I've seen what's in there. Sometimes you look down and there's an animal in there, you just kinda close that lid and move on.
And call for Eddie to go in.
That's right, Eddie, yeah, Eddie, you're good.
Okay, moving on, we have a couple resolutions, new business. Resolution number twenty sixteen dash oh one dash F. Resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year two thousand and sixteen pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section three twenty-one dash thirty-four. So we have to ask the county to give us our money.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Mayor, I think we've got these reversed. I'll just go ahead and start. I got two resolutions, one's supplemental and the other's getting the money. So we'll do, we'll spend it first and then go get it in the true spirit of government, how's that? Resolution twenty sixteen oh one F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the two thousand and sixteen annual appropriations that were adopted on December eighth, two thousand and fifteen are to be amended. And whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section five seven oh five point three six A five. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated, so to permit the village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year two thousand and sixteen, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year two thousand and sixteen. Fund two thousand and one, police operating personnel services. The current appropriation is three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Change of a hundred and seventeen, six hundred. Total, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Fund two thousand and one, police operating other expenses, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven. Change, a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight. Total, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five. Fund two thousand nine oh four, apartment building operation, eleven thousand, seven hundred and ten. Change, fifteen thousand, three oh nine. Total, twenty-seven thousand, nineteen dollars. Swimming, twenty-nine oh nine swimming pool, a hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Change, five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Forty-nine oh one, other capital projects, there's no appropriated dollars right now. Change, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents for a total of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents. Section two, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies. Transfers from the general fund to police operating, twenty-nine oh one, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. From general fund to golf course, twenty-nine oh eight, ten thousand dollars. And general fund swimming pool, to swimming pool, twenty-nine oh nine, thirty thousand dollars. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second it. Any discussion?
Let me make a couple of comments and then if there are questions that I can't answer, we have a fiscal officer here. On the, there's a couple of things. Tax budget restrictions keep us from appropriating the full amounts of twenty-nine oh one, twenty-nine oh four and twenty-nine oh nine. So we can't do that till we have the revised certificate from the budget commission. The capital projects is money that we're gonna need to send to the city of Cincinnati at some point during the year. They, they'd given us some, we have some need to make some water main repairs under Winton Road and that's the estimate on the cost. And police fund is roughly half of the appropriated transfer amount this year and is included in the tax revenues. Should be approximately ten months' worth of operating funds. And as we get closer to the end of the year, then we put some more in if we need it or we do it sooner if we need it and hopefully we won't, but we'll see. And then the transfers to the golf and swimming pool, that's money to make payments for obligations that we have until we start receiving revenues beginning of the season for those respective facilities. So I'll entertain any questions.
Yeah, the change of the appropriations and the change that you have in here, those monies were not appropriated at any time. This is, these are additional funds, correct?
For the capital projects fund, that's.
No, 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 for the police operating.
Yeah, for the police operating fund, what we're doing is we're switching, we're accounting for all the police activity in the police operating fund. And whenever the tax budget was done, that wasn't the plan that we had had. So the appropriations were limited by what we had in the tax budget. So now since that fund is gonna be getting transfers into it, we'll certify that to the county budget commission. Now that might, can be spent from that fund.
These are additional monies that we've not appropriated before?
We did not appropriate before, but the total cost of operating our police department is not any different in the budget than what we are appropriating.
It was in the general fund is where we had paid for some of the police salaries previously and we wanted, in a discussion with the finance and audit last year, we wanted to put all of the police operating funds in one line category so that it wasn't in two separate places. So this is just.
It's easier to track that way.
Yes.
To the track of it, okay.
Any other questions? Call for the vote. Clerk call the roll.
Hermes? Aye. Cavode?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty sixteen oh one dash F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers passes. Okay, now we'll do the one I read before as resolution oh two.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have resolution twenty sixteen oh two F. A resolution requesting the county auditor make tax advances during the year two thousand and sixteen pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section three two one point three four. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code allows a taxing authority to request payment from the county auditor funds derived from taxes or other sources to the county treasurer, which may be held on account of a location subdivision. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, the auditor and the treasurer of Hamilton County in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section three twenty-one point three four, be required to draw and pay to the village of Green Hills upon written request of the finance director, Matt Sanders, to the county auditor funds due in any settlement of two thousand and sixteen derived from taxes or other sources payable to the county treasurer to the account of the village of Green Hills and lawfully applicable for purposes of the current fiscal year. Section two, clerk of the village of Green Hills is hereby directed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I second.
Any questions or comments?
This is just the official request from the county to send us our money.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, well, wait, roll call.
Cavode?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Hermes? Aye.
Resolution number twenty sixteen dash oh two dash F passes. Do we need to?
I would like to move to make it amend the agenda.
Okay.
Second?
I would like to ask someone else down that way what we need to say to recognize the manager's chain of command.
You would need to amend the agenda to add the motion to concur. You would need to amend the agenda to add the motion to concur with.
Her recommendations. I would like to move to amend the agenda to concur with the manager's recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
I think now I have to move, oh.
You have to vote to amend the agenda, and then.
Okay. All right. So now, voting to amend the agenda, is that a voice vote?
Yeah. All in favor?
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. I would like to.
Go ahead.
I would like to move to concur with the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Of, do I have to say what it's for? For the acting manager during temporary absences.
Up.
Oh, okay. That when the manager is temporarily absent from the village, the following chain of command would exist. Finance Director, Police Chief, Executive Assistant to the Municipal Manager, Service Foreman, pursuant to Green Hills Charter, Section four point three eight zero A. I so move to adopt.
Second.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Calendar.
So what do we do if we get that down this far?
Somebody will come back.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start down on this end, January twenty-fifth, ten a.m., Monday, Laws and Rules, subject to agenda.
February twenty, council retreat. I don't think we've set a time yet, we can talk about that work session.
I have to get together with Mr. Cavode and Mr. Dog Collar to find out how we're going to do this. We would like to have the committee meeting prior to the commission meeting. So just kind of like work it out the same day.
Okay.
All right.
Is that it? All right, we're adjourned.